Hello. The June 6, 2017 meeting of the Stafford Board of Supervisors is called to order. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Bomke?
Here.
Mr. Cavalier?
Here.
Mrs. Mauer?
Here.
Mr. Milde?
Here.
Ms. Sellers?
Here.
Mr. Snellings?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you all for joining us both here and at home. My name is Paul Milde. I represent the Aquia District. First up today, Meg Bomke is going to make a very special presentation to Christopher Knowles, the son of our beloved Assistant Fire and Rescue Chief Lori Knowles.
So I've prepared some remarks, and because this is such a special presentation, I'm going to read parts of it because I want to make sure I don't forget anything. So today is about honoring and congratulating Christopher Knowles on achieving his Eagle Scout Award, which, as we all know, the highest rank in Boy Scouts. But this is an extra-special recognition today. Many of you remember when Chris lost his father, and Lori, her husband, in a boating accident just before Chris's fifth birthday. What a tragic event for any family to manage and recover from. So after the accident, Lori decided to get Chris involved in scouting because she wanted to make sure that he had a male role model in his life. Great thing that Mom did, and he started Cub Scouts, and he was on his way. But then, about eight years later, life handed them another tragedy, when their house burned to the ground, and we all remember this. And Chris was in eighth grade at Drew Middle School. Not many young people have two horrific events in their lifetime, much less in an eight-year span. Wow. A lot of heartache for this family. But the real story here is that Chris and Lori handled all of these events in such a positive way, and they were challenged. He persevered in Boy Scouts and his studies at Stafford High School, and he stayed focused, and he stayed disciplined. And nobody took anything away from him. As we all know, when times get tough, you can always take the easy way out of something. But he didn't do that. He continued to earn his merit badges, and he never missed a beat. I'm sure he and his mother had many challenging discussions at home, and wonderful little discussions, I used to say, in the living room, "Let's go chat." But that happens in any normal house. But Chris and his scoutmasters have said nothing but positive things about him being a patrol leader, and how he, the other young people below him, looked up to him, respected him. He's gone on many, many camping trips, and he has been a superb leader. And we know that he's an outstanding citizen, and he's going to continue to live the life that he's lived as a Boy Scout since he was in the fifth grade. And I want to give some credit to Troop 516 because his scoutmasters have been Mr. Mance, Mr. Doughty, and Mr. Raymond. And I know the fire and rescue family here, they have supported him. Your Boy Scout troop has supported you, and your mother, and Laura, all along the way. And they did that because they cared so much about you. And I think it's wonderful that we have that kind of inspiration in our community. So now, I want to let -- Chris is going to talk. We went out for a little road tour. I picked him up last week. I said, "I'd like to go out and see some of your posters in the restaurants." So we did that, and I'm going to let him tell you about his project now.
So what I did was, I sent out letters to every restaurant in Stafford County, and I asked them if they would like a poster, a poster demonstrating how to perform the Heimlich maneuver, in hopes that it would someday help save someone's life. I ended up delivering about 50 posters in mainly local restaurants.
So we went out. We saw one at Family Pizzeria right over here by Cavalier. We walked in. The lady said, "It's right there." We went to Garaphas down in Falmouth, and they were closed. And then we went over to McDonald's, and theirs had fallen on the ground, but they're going to reinstall it. And when you're in there buying french fries or McFlurry, you'll be able to stand there and read it, which is really great. You may not have to use that tool for, you know, maybe never in your life, or maybe it might be just a year. So anyway, a great, great accomplishment. And so when all of us are out, and you're in the community, look for his poster, because here it is. In the restaurants. So a huge congratulations on behalf of the entire Board of Supervisors and all the citizens in Stafford. I'm so excited in your achievement of being an Eagle Scout. Congrats to you. And on behalf of the community, we have a Stafford flag for you, and a coin that's in there, and also a certificate that says, "Certificate of Commendation to Christopher L. Knowles, Troop 516, for attaining the rank of Eagle Scout." Great job, and we know that your dad is here looking down on you and saying, "Son, a job well done."
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Bomke. Now, next we have presentations by the public. If anyone wishes to address the board, this is going to be your opportunity to do so. The public has two opportunities to comment during board meetings, during the public presentation portion of the meeting, and during a public hearing on a particular issue. If you'd like to comment during a board meeting, please remain courteous and respectful to the audience and to board members. It is also important that you keep track of your time at the podium. You have lights to the right of your screen that you stand in front of, and the green light means you're under two minutes, the yellow light means you're down to one minute, and the red light means you should be finished. And with that, I don't have any speaker cards. I will open the podium up to anyone who would like to address the board. I need you to speak your -- state your name and address when you come down. Anyone? Okay. And that's that. I have a few comments. Oh, but I'm not up next. I'll move to supervisor comments.
Mr. Cavalier?
Well, I went to a lot of events this time, but it seems like almost everybody else on the board did too, and I saw most people at them. And so, since most of these other people are running for some sort of office this year, I'll let them blow the horns, and I'll skip you, skip it myself. But I would like seeing that this young man here was here today. I did have an Eagle Scout in my district, too. Tyler Hermanson attained that rank last month, and I wanted to congratulate him on that. That's all. Thank you.
Mrs. Mauer?
Also attended a number of events. Attended the VDOT Partinardust Meeting. It was the first in a series that they planned to have as part of their marketing campaign to let everybody know about the construction that's coming along Courthouse Road and the interchange. It's an incredible project, and I'm very appreciative to VDOT for getting their message out. And also, on the west side of the road, the 10-foot bike path that's going to run from Winding Creek Road all the way down to the other side of the interchange is going to be a welcome addition. I can tell you that a number of people in my district are looking forward to that bike path. Secondly, attended the business appreciation luncheon with several of my colleagues on the board. Congratulations to the winners. And attended two senior awards night. I had the honor of presenting the AFCEA STEM Scholarship, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math, to five recipients, some at Brookpoint and three, three? Two at Colonial Forge. And we have some really impressive kids here in Stafford County, so it was a pleasure to see all of the honors and accomplishments that they had received at those senior award nights. Also attended the Joint Board of Supervisor/School Board Meeting as an alternate. And I want to really thank the superintendent and our new county administrator over here, who probably feels like he's been here six years with all the work that he has done. But I will tell you, one of the projects that are near and dear to my heart is the shared services and the Joint CIP, and we have made a significant amount of progress in doing the analysis. We are on track for the Joint CIP, and it's really going to bring much more of a measured approach to racking and stacking our capital improvement projects. Also attended PRTC, and that's always interesting. It's a Potomac Regional Transportation Commission as an alternate on that one as well. Little bit concerned with the way they do capitalization, but they are moving towards resolution on that. In addition to that, they've got a great new executive director up there, and I believe, Mr. Thomas, you were on that hiring committee. Good choice, very good choice. Expect to see some good things come out of there. And finally, I attended the Sheriff's Annual Awards Banquet, and it was really interesting as all of these deputies received their awards to listen to what they are facing out there in the field. And Stafford County is a great place, but Stafford County has some danger. And I am grateful to our sheriff's deputies that they put their lives on the line every day. And what was incredibly emotional was that Brandon Boyle received the Deputy of the Year Award, and listening to them recount how he was shot four times last year, and he's back on the streets. So God bless him, and God bless his family, and please watch out and say thank you to a deputy.
Ms. Sellers?
Thank you, ma'am. Also attended the Sheriff's Department Awards, and it's really great to see Deputy Boyle back on. It was kind of surreal that night, actually, in the emergency room with the family, and spoke to the mother, who was very, very upset that night in the emergency room. And she just has nothing but great things to say about the support she's felt from the county and the Sheriff's Department. So I echo what Ms. Mauer's saying. Please thank our sheriff's deputies. We've seen them out in the Garrisonville District two days in a row now, with some lockdowns and high law enforcement presence, and just would like to remind folks that they have a tough job. Also, attended the opening of Operation Finally Home. The family moved in, and it was quite a ceremony, and the family's still kind of coming down off of Cloud Nine. They are integrating into the community with their two young kids, been seeing them out and about. The Winding Creek Community Meeting, we met again to talk about. It's going to come back to the board on June 20. There's been some back and forth about some of the decisions to be made, but all in all, at least on the Garrisonville side, I have maybe one or two people that still aren't happy, and out of, you know, 30,000 people, that's not bad. And we remember what happened the last time it came, so having two people is a lot different. And then had the experience last week, last Friday, spent the morning with Dr. Benson over at Head Start, playing with four-year-olds or learning with four-year-olds. And it's quite an experience if you've never been down to the Head Start Building and seen what they're doing. A four-and-a-half, five-year-old read to us a book, so that was pretty interesting. But the best part was, we made butter. So sat there in this four-year-old classroom and made butter in Tupperware containers. So had a good time, and I always love getting into the schools with the superintendent. That's all I have.
Mr. Snellings?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Speaking of Eagle Scout Awards, I set a record, a record which I'm very proud of. We all go to these award ceremonies. We do it willingly. We love to go to them, and we usually do eight or 10 a year. Weekend of May the 21st, I did five. On Sunday, something that's never happened before in the Eagle Scouts, I did, presented the award to three brothers. They all received it at the same time. These young men are triplets. Their last name is Pierce. They go to Brookpoint High School. And just an amazing feat for three young brothers to all get that award at the same time. I mean, it's hard enough getting one person to Eagle Scout, but that was really amazing. I would like, Marshall, could you turn on that little slideshow we've got? This is where we are, folks, on the memorial that's being built behind me. They delivered a lot of the granite. It's starting to go up. As you can see, some of the etched granite is in, designating the different areas, the different wards. This is going to be a beautiful memorial. It is scheduled to open on July the 15th. They're making a tremendous amount of progress. If you have time on the way out, just, you know, please stop. Don't get in their way, but stop and take a look at it. I will tell you that we're still about $20,000 short, so if anybody out there with some deep pockets wants a tax write-off, if you stroke a check, we certainly appreciate it. But we are, we do need about $20,000, and you can still buy bricks, so there's a lot of time left there. And certainly want to thank the Freelance Star. They ran another article last week to kind of bring the awareness. But this thing is really going up, and we're monitoring the progress every day. Last Friday, I attended, along with Mr. Thomas, an interesting event, a voter registration rally at Brookpoint High School that was attended by the governor. And Brookpoint High School was one of 12 schools to register at least 65% of their senior class or eligible voters to vote in the upcoming election. They had a big pep rally, I guess about 1,500 people there. The governor came in, and of course, I don't know much about our governor, but he's got kind of a clown side to him, and when he wants to. And he's really interacted well with the kids, but it was a great experience. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Clown, you know. Happy-go-lucky type. He gets in with the people.
Mr. Thomas?
I'll bring a little more seriousness back here. We had a Community Economic Development Committee meeting today. Couple of issues that the committee is recommending to the board. The dog license, we got to a point where we're recommending the board consider a change to a lifetime license, and the recommended fee, we'd like the board to consider is $10. Very closely matches the amount of time and materials it takes to actually issue those. So it's not, it's not a money-making thing. It's not supposed to be. So we believe that that will pretty much match the cost of providing that service to the citizens. We also have a recommendation for the PD2 zoning district will be coming up to the board, and also the way we do addressing for properties is currently in ordinance, so the staff is recommending, and the committee agreed, to have the board consider moving some of that into a policy so it can be more flexible as needs arise to adapt to issues that change on the ground. And then, I think the most exciting thing was, we have a lot of money for PDR this year, and we ran out of applicants. So the board soon will be considering opening up another round of PDR, and we need people out in the community to start thinking about that. It's quite a commitment. It's a lifetime commitment for your property and those who might buy it from you, but it's certainly a way for us to preserve open space for the future, so that will be coming to the board. Events, I attended the American Legion Installation of Officers with Mr. Milde and Mr. Snellings. It was quite an interesting event. I didn't realize, I was hoping to get a sneak peek at the new location, but at the last minute, they weren't able to make it in there, so we did probably the last installation of officers at their old location, and hopefully we'll all be part of the new one very soon. The ribbon cutting has been delayed, so if that's on your calendar, that date's flexible, but just keep your ears open. This morning, I attended the Chamber of Commerce Stafford Roundtable at Cannon Ridge, which is up and running, and we just need to make sure we get enough golfers out there to keep that business going. As you all know, it kind of fell under the wayside there for a while, and they're making a great effort to have that be, you know, a resource for our community. So we need to make sure we get out there and use it. Last Thursday morning, while some of my colleagues were having fun at a transportation forum, I attended the Stafford Senior High School Awards Program. And interesting to note, normally there's about 50 graduates that are summa cum laude, but this year, the class has 66 of those. So they have blown pretty much any statistic in that for as long as people can remember. So it's a very interesting senior class. I have one there, so I'm looking forward to that graduation ceremony here soon. And I also had an Eagle Scout this week as well, Cameron Moore. So this is a time of the year where we get to see all the cream of the crop, as we like to say, rising and getting their eagles. So that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Bomke?
Yes, we had an Infrastructure Committee meeting today. We talked about Mountain View and Stephanaga Road, and VDOT's going to be coming back to us with information later, but they're not willing to move forward at this point in time. We also talked about Embry Mill Road and Mine Road. We got updates on that. We talked about the donation of county land for the Park and Ride Lot, which is in addition, an addition with the, right next to the I-95 interchange. And we had a major update on utility projects that are going on throughout the county. We approved the county hiring a consultant to conduct a well-water study, and a study in our county has not been done since 2003. And this is specifically for the Piedmont area over in the Hartwood District. So I think it'll be very interesting to see what those results come back with, and we'll have that information, did we talk about that, three to four months perhaps? The R Board, we needed to amend a permit for the R Board because now that we've requested that all the trash that's picked up in Stafford County has to be dumped in Stafford County, our tonnage, we're getting up to our tonnage, our daily tonnage that we're allowed to have. So we don't want to violate anything with DEQ, so we're looking at increasing that tonnage. So that's a good thing. And then also, we talked about the Service District for Improvements to Lynn Haven Lane, which is over in the Rock Hill District, and we moved that forward, and that will be coming to the board on June 20. I attended a number of these other events with my colleagues, the annual Sheriff's Award Banquet, which is always phenomenal. And Mr. Snellings and I attended the Long's Farmers Market. They kicked off last Wednesday, and it's the same people that are running the farmers' market out of Stafford Hospital. And all I can tell you is there are a lot of beautiful fruits and vegetables and all kinds of wonderful vendors there. They're only open on Wednesdays from 3:00 to 7:00 o'clock, so mark that one down. And then lastly, Mr. Snellings and I attended the Memorial Day Celebration to honor five World War I veterans that we have buried over at the Falmouth Cemetery. And I have to thank the Cemetery Committee that was led by Ron Seitz and his wife Debbie, and Anita Dodd from our county, and the Quantico Young Marines who presented the colors. This was commemorating a 100-year anniversary for these five servicemen that all went into war in 1917. And I just want to read their names. They were Mead Brooks, George Payne, James Roberson, Herbert Sullivan, and Archie Gallahan. And the Cemetery Committee presented wreaths on all their gravestones. And if you've never visited the cemetery, I ask you to add it to your list. It's very interesting. Thank you, madam, Mr. Chair.
And Mr. Milde?
Thank you. Following up on a couple of things I heard, the PDR program, I believe, we've only been out once looking for applicants, so that was an inventory of applications from several years ago. So that's a, it's not, it took us that long with the funding we had to go through the people that met the criteria. A couple other things that I think, I'm not mistaken, that we all, pretty much all of us, attended also since last meeting, the Business Appreciation at the airport. And also, I attended the Aquia Harbor Property Owners Association, and Mr. Cavalier and a surprise guest. Mr. Thomas was there, and they were happy to see him there. Also, that, he alluded to the transportation forum that Fredericksburg Chamber of Commerce put on in Office 17. That was an interesting, informative meeting about the idea of a service district or a new taxing authority, a series of new taxes that would be levied on, that we would allow to be levied here to pay for transportation. I couldn't speak for the board. I could only speak for myself that I wasn't interested in that at this point. And I, Supervisor Thomas and I also went to another chamber event, the Shrimp Fest down in Fredericksburg. So, and everything, I was at a lot of the other events. We have a new, we have a new person here. Fred Presley recently joined our team as Deputy County Administrator. There he are. And Fred comes to us from West Warwick, Rhode Island, where he's been the town manager since 2013. He's, he has over 18 years of experience in the public and private sector. He's also a veteran of the United States Army. Yep. I know our county administrator, Tom Foley, and our deputy county administrator, Mike Smith, are going to have some, are happy to have you and to have some help. So on behalf of the whole Board of Supervisors, Fred, we welcome you. I don't believe there are any additions to the agenda. There's just a couple deletions?
I'll cover this.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right. Public hearing, it says here, public hearing number 18 on the agenda regarding the condemnation, of course, was settled, so we can cancel that as we were warned might happen. Are there any items on the consent agenda we want to pull?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remove item number nine.
Mrs. Mauer, number nine. Any others? All right. Yep. I'll turn it over to, my, we're mixing up the order if we change the way we do things here. My notes definitely say to go to the consent agenda, vote right now, but are we, is that what we're doing now? This is the new order in which we do things?
No, we have to pass the bylaws first.
Which includes the county attorney's report.
Of course, so then I will do it the way we've always done it, which is to start with our very talkative Mr. Schumate, the county attorney, for his report.
Nothing. Did that set a new record?
Yeah.
I have nothing to report. Thank you very much.
And then I'll turn it over to you, Mr. County Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to say a couple words about Mr. Presley, and maybe give him an opportunity to just come up to the podium and introduce himself, and tell you a little bit about himself just briefly. But I did want you to know that he competed against 103 other applicants from around the country. We had 25 states where we had candidates put in. Fred has actually, you mentioned, 18 years of experience, both private and public. He spent about four years running his own firm, seven years as a Director of Planning and Economic Development, two important areas here in Stafford, obviously, and four years as a town manager. He is a member of the International City County Managers Association, which is the international association for local government managers. He was described throughout the process as an innovative thinker, and somebody who doesn't like that phrase that I don't like, which is, "We've always done it this way." So I think he comes into an organization with the right culture. I think he's going to do some great jobs. We're in the process of taking a look at our structure and how our deputies oversee some things, and so we're really in a great place. We're getting ready to have a leadership retreat later this month to bring a whole new set of leaders together as a team and move ourselves forward. So we're glad to have Fred with us. He was our top candidate throughout the process, so we're excited to get him started this weekend. He may want to come up just for a second and just say a few brief words and use the rest of my time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Board, for the opportunity. I'm just really privileged and honored to be here. It's only been here for a little over a week now, but it's such a welcoming community, I have to say. I mean, all the staff here, all the board members that I've now met, finally, and just the people in town, too. When I talk to people and I tell them what I'm going to be doing, it's just, it's really been refreshing to see that kind of welcome, and I'm looking forward to bringing to the table whatever I can to help the county move forward in a positive direction. So thank you.
Keith's back there thinking, "Be careful what you wish for."
Yeah, but he's still here, right? See? He could have run. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Presley? All right. Thank you, Mr. Presley. Looking forward to working with you. Now I will entertain a motion for the consent agenda without item number nine.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Please cast your votes, and you may tally when you're ready. All right, that passes unanimously. Ms. Mauer? Item nine.
Mr. Chairman, I have pulled this item from the agenda just to make a minor amendment that was brought up in our first committee meeting and also approved through our second committee meeting, which was the Community and Economic Development Committee. This is related to a change to the PD2, and on page six, number six, item number E, I just want to make a small amendment that the development will not create additional residential units and replace the word density. So I make a motion to approve sending this to the Planning Commission with removing the word density and adding the word units on six E.
I have a motion.
Say.
And I have a second for Mr. Cavalier. Any discussion? All right, please cast your votes, and you may tally them when you are ready. And that passes unanimously also. And that brings us to proposed revisions to the board's bylaws.
Mr. Chairman, just a brief overview. On May 9, the bylaws committee, which consists of Mr. Cavalier and Mr. Snellings. On May ninth, the bylaws committee, which consists of Mr. Cavalier and Mr. Snellings, met to discuss and pen to changes to the bylaws. On May 16th, the board discussed those items and asked that they come back here today for some consideration of final action. The items under consideration for change include changing the rule of the agenda, a procedure of change in terms of the ruling pin to the consent agenda, and a final item being election of the chairman. We talked about these a good bit, but I will just cover the last part of that, which would be running the election of the chairman. This item would prohibit the chairman from having consecutive terms without taking one year's break. And also would restrict the, any board member from serving as chairman if it's in the same year that they're running for an elected office. Those items were before you, for some discussion at the last meeting. We want more discussion today. Since we met last time, I can review the agenda. Chair, vice chair, thought it would be helpful to get a little bit more research done on the issues relating to the election of the chair. You had at your place a brief memo for me. We shall cover that. Just Jared Reason, wanted to share with you a little information on those particular points. We did have the suggestion that Ms. Bompke checked with Mike Chandler, who is one of the folks that does the Certified Supervisors Program for VACO, has done it for many years in terms of his knowledge about these two items. We also checked with six different localities and asked them the question about the specific localities that we've looked to before. Regarding the question of serving consecutive terms, we found that four of the six localities, and those localities are Fauke, Hanover, Loudon, Prince William, Spotsylvania, and Alamo, some of our typical benchmarks. Four of the six localities do not permit the chairman to serve consecutive terms. Prince William and Loudon actually elect their chairmans at large through the election process, so that doesn't really apply in this case.
So may I understand this? Just make sure, so of the, of the, of the six, two elect them at large anyway, so they don't count? And the other four all restrict chairman from being appointed by the rest of the board consecutive terms? Okay.
So the other question regarding serving, running for the chairmanship when you're serving for, or running for an elected office, we found that only Spotsylvania has such a change in their bylaws, which doesn't allow that to occur. The other localities don't have any restrictions on serving as chairman. We did, again, talk to Mike Chandler and also the General Counsel for the Virginia Association of Counties regarding their familiarity with the bylaws around the state because they work so regularly with the localities. And besides the data that we have here, they're not familiar with other localities in particular that restrict any board member from running for chair because they're running for public office. So those are the conclusions that we found.
Did you happen to ask them if they're, what they know about other localities that don't, that don't permit consecutive terms of the chair?
Yeah, they, they were not familiar with many localities that had a restriction on consecutive terms.
You just happened to pick the, of our six groups?
Maybe in this region that there's.
Interesting.
I do think that that's much more varied, obviously, than the other item, but.
Okay, you want to go ahead and briefly, just let's, if, let's start, let's do these one at a time. You want to start and just briefly exchange, one last time, explain the change of the, in the order of the agenda? Is that going to be, can we?
Sure.
Take them one at a time? You okay with that?
Yes. Under section 3.1, we have those changes outlined. In essence, all that we're trying to do is at the beginning of the board meeting, right after the roll is called, to be sure that we have a final agenda that the board can formally adopt, just so that the public and board members, in case there's been a change that's come up at the last minute, are very clear about the items that will be considered during the meeting. That is pretty standard practice in most localities. And rather than having additions and deletions later down the agenda, after we've started the meeting formally, it makes those changes clear at the beginning and then the board can formally adopt. The adoption of the agenda is an action that most localities and some of our regional boards take, just in case there's a board member that is uncomfortable with an item and wants to make a statement to that effect and so forth. But mostly it's to make sure there's clarity about that. So it's a, it's a minor change to do that at the beginning of the meeting. Under section three dash.
Oh. Are we doing these?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
One by one?
You may.
I'll make that in the form of a motion.
You know, I don't have a resolution in my board package because I'm using a paper package and I see there's one referenced here, so someone else will have to do what Jack just did because I don't have one to reference. So.
There is no, yeah, I think you could make a motion to approve section three point, the changes to 3.1 of the bylaws. There's not a formal resolution.
I have a motion then and a second by Mrs. Sellers. Any further discussion on number one?
I'll just make a comment. When we talked about this, you know, we, in our, from what I've seen from my three and a half years on the board, our board doesn't typically have an issue with this. But apparently there are some boards where members try to add things, you know, at, after or before the agenda's been set. And so I think that, you know, like, let's say I wanted to add a couple proclamations at the last minute. This will prevent me from doing that, you know? And Tom, you look like you have something else to say.
I might say you all do have a procedure for adding items to the agenda, which is not going to be affected by this. But the chairman does have the ability to add an item to the agenda as a part of, as the bylaws are stated. It may be that some board members disagree with that item being considered on the agenda, but the chairman has the right to put it on there. This simply gives the opportunity if that happens. I've been a part of some boards that there've been some very controversial national issues that have come up that, that got on the agenda, that board members felt very differently about. But it was put on the agenda for consideration and dealt with before the adoption. So it does create that opportunity for the board members to make statements about what's important, you know, what's important from their perspective on that. So again, I think that's the reason that you see it in most places, besides just the clarity of it.
All right. Any more comments? All right. I have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And you may tally. And that passes unanimously. Mr. Cavalier, you want to go to number two for us? Or maybe have someone explaining it? It looks pretty obvious.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just do a quick overview. This is a consent agenda. It just requests that board members during their board comments make a statement about whether they'd like to remove something from the consent agenda.
Okay.
That's going to be a new one.
We'll work, we're not going to, I don't think there's any. Yeah, I'll give a little slack.
I'll put, I'll make that in the form of a motion also.
Second.
Motion and seconded by Ms. Maurer. Any discussion? Okay. Cast your votes. And tally, please. And that passes unanimously. And the last one, we just heard an explanation. Well, I have three bullets, but really four items. So let's start with number three, which is consecutive terms. You can only serve as a chairman or vice chairman one time without waiting a year or waiting until, I guess until someone else serves. Does it say a year or does it say until there's a, someone else serves?
No, it's just non-consecutive, which means the next year they could run.
So then conceivably, a person could serve for a month, leave the board, or quit the chairmanship, and then you could take over the chairmanship. Is that the intent?
I think the intent is that you take one year off before you could serve again if you've served as chair, and that's under section 1.1E.
Oh, I understand how we do it, but I'm just telling you how it could happen. There's, it's not impossible to imagine that someone would leave in the middle of a term. Just making sure you, I don't, I don't like it, so I'm not going to vote for it no matter what you do with it. I just wanted to.
I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman, what the point you're making. What do you mean leaving the movement?
Well, what if I was, what if I, what if I told you right now?
Maybe I'm still thinking about calling the governor a clown. I don't, I don't know.
I don't.
I'm too preoccupied.
I mean that if I were to resign my chairmanship, then presumably the person that preceded me could, could come in after me in less than, in only five months while I passed.
But the vice chairman would take your spot.
No, we'd have, we, I don't, I don't think it's like the presidency. I think we'd reelect a chairman, wouldn't we, if I resigned?
Yeah, I guess you would reelect.
If I was assassinated, that's a different story.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
Anyway, it's up to you guys.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? All right, well, my reasoning is simple. It certainly won't affect me. I, there's one thing for sure, I won't be around to see if this, Matt, see how this works with me involved. But I just think that I, the board can make the decision on an annual basis whether they want to have the same chairman twice in a row. I've, I was happy with some, at least one of our chairman that, that ran, had two terms consecutively, and that would be Mark Dudenheffer. We're batting three, three, three. With that, any more discussion? All right. Cast your votes. And tally the vote. All right. That passes with a five-two. And the last one?
Mr. Chairman, the, the final is section 1.1B, and I'll just, I'll just read the added language. Board members are ineligible to be elected chairman for any year in which that member's seat on the board is up for election regardless of that member's intent to not run for election.
All right. Anyone want to talk about this? Or make a motion for?
Make a motion for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and seconded. I didn't mean to get the first and last word last time. Does somebody want to talk about this before I do?
I would just say that as a caution, I mean, in one year, you're going to have four people up and you're going to be automatically, no matter who that person is, limiting yourself to three choices. I just, I mean, I see merits on both sides of it. I certainly do.
Again, the board, hopefully we're all, we all can make our decis, make a good decision at the, at the time. Not, it's, we've, and it's, it doesn't, it doesn't protect against, for instance, a great example is Mr. Thomas and me right now, running in a race for a seat that has nothing to do with this board, so I would have been prohibited from.
Which is a seat whether you're running for or not. Your seat.
His seat is up.
Right. I am, exactly. So I couldn't run, but.
You included him.
So if, it would not preclude, Ms., will you listen to me? Let me finish my sentence. Believe me, he could have been chairman if, except for the new rule we just passed and the, before this, and I wouldn't have been able to be chairman. I just, I don't know, I just understand that, don't understand why we would limit ourselves. But Bob's point is even better, that you'd have, you're stuck with, what if you have three people that only have a, maybe they're, they're, you know, you don't like them all that much. Democrats, I didn't say that.
Mr. Chairman, though.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Snellings, please.
The thought process, well, first of all, let me go back, a little history on this. It really has, up until this year, kind of been an unwritten understanding that if you're up for reelection, you will not run for chairman. Now, the reason for that is, at least in my mind, Jack, you may chime in here, we all know how busy you are when you run for election. It is nonstop, seven days a week. And if you're going to be chairman of the board and you're running for election, you're not going to be able to dedicate your full time to chairmanship because chairmanship takes a lot of time. That's the thought process that I had when I recommended this.
Mr. Cavalier?
Well, and even further, as chairman, you control the agenda. And therefore, being a political animal, you control what is advantageous to you and your election bid. So I think that does provide an unfair advantage to that position, to that person in that position based upon that. And I have seen that before, so.
Have you seen it recently?
No.
Ms. Sellers, actually, isn't it, you mean Ms. Mount, I mean Ms. Bompke?
There are counties that do, that, that elect chairman based on, you know, drawing of straw. So you could be in your first year and be chairman of the board in some counties. And it works. Maybe, and you can, we can always, future boards can always override the bylaws by vote. So you can't overdo it. But to say that, you know, you could be new, I don't know if that's fair. The people elected them fair and square. And regardless how many years you have on this board, all of us are equal. There's no seniority. So I, I think it's a good rule. Obviously, I seconded it.
Ms. Thomas?
I have a legal question. That brought up a good point. So when the organizational meeting starts, there's no chairman yet, the administrator usually runs the meeting. Would there be an opportunity for someone to waive the bylaws then? I just want to make sure that truly is, I mean, it's okay, that somebody would throw that motion up?
Yes, Supervisor Tom. It's just like throughout any of the other, portions of the board's meetings, it can suspend the bylaws if it, if there's sufficient, you know, number of board members in agreeance.
Ms. Bompke?
Yeah, I just feel like, I, I don't know if I would want to hamstring the board with this requirement. I feel like, like Ms. Sellers said, we're, we're all educated, elected people, we're all equals. And if you're elected the chair of the board, you have to rise up and make the decisions that are right for the board. And I would hope that anybody that's chair isn't making decisions that are in their political benefit, especially because every other board member can add things to the agenda if they want to. Now, you might be going, well, wow, she's really naive. Well, no, because we're going to hold your feet to the fire. I mean, and I don't think, we've had chairmans, well, not while I've served on the board, that have actually done that. And I think it's our responsibility as board members to challenge that chair if they're going to take that, that, that direction. So I, I think that, and you're absolutely right, Ms. Sellers, somebody that's brand new could stand up and be chair, but I think that it, it just doesn't give you the options that I think you need when you're selecting your chair.
Thank you. Any other comments? Well, a couple of things. It's not, it, obviously it wasn't an unwritten rule for four of the people here because I ended up being chair in an election year. So it, and I've been here long, as long, and I didn't understand it to be some kind of a fast and hard rule. As a matter of fact, I think Mr. Cavalier was also chair at least one time in an election year.
I was, and that's why I think that I do.
Well, well, it didn't work out for you. But that reminds me, if we, if you, now, now, I want you to just, I want you to think about that election and you think about the other part about having a new person being forced to be chair. And you tell me, I think back at the board, the boards that we, members we've had, and I don't, I don't think I was ready to be chair in my first, second, or third year. And I am certain that some of the other people I've served with weren't. And I've only seen a second year person become chair, I think, once. And frankly, she was good, she was, as much as I didn't want her to be, it turned out that she did a relatively good job at it. So I, I just don't think, I think it's a crazy idea to, to limit us to not, to be down to four, to three members in our, every other election year, or four members in the, in the alternating part of that cycle. As far as political benefit, your point is perfect. I mean, anyone can add something to the agenda and a majority can take anything off of the agenda, even if I add it. And I also would like, of course, I don't, I know you're not, you're not alluding to me at all. There won't be another, another board meeting before the election takes place that Bob and I are, are in. And I don't think anyone could point to an example of me of being, doing anything to slacking on my job any more than I ever would, or wouldn't. I mean, I'm as, I'm as attentive as I ever am. I don't, you know, I watch, I, that's, my style is my style. And, and I certainly am not, had not adjusted the agenda one tiny bit for anything to do with politics. So I, they sound good on paper, but they're not, they're just, I don't think they're realistic. So I respectfully will not be able to support this, this motion. With that, cast your votes to, to not allow a chairman to be elected during his, his or her elec, election year. And may tally the vote. And that passes four to three. All right. Wow, that was a relatively quick, regular session. At this point, I'd ask Ms. Bompke to read us into a closed session.
Whereas the board desires to hold a closed meeting for discussion concerning the terms or scope of a public contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the board; two, discussion and consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose where discussion in an open where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the board, three, discussion and consideration of a special award for a specific person, and four, discussion concerning the terms or scope of a public contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the board, and whereas pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A3, comma, 10, and 29, such discussions may occur in closed meetings.
Second. Moved and seconded, please cast your votes. And tally the votes. All right, we are unanimously going into closed session, and when we are finished, we will come back out and certify.
Five.
Second. I have a motion to certify. At a second, please cast your votes, and tally when you're ready. And we are certified at six, with one person absent, and we will take a break until seven o'clock. Six, 2017 meeting of the Stafford Board of Supervisors is called to order. Good evening, thank you for joining us here and at home. I am Paul Milde, representing the Acquia District. Ms. Bopki will lead us in the invocation, and Mr. Cavalier will lead us in the pledge.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for everything that you have bestowed to us each and every day. Please give this board guidance and leadership as we make decisions tonight on behalf of our community. And we thank you for our men and women in uniform in the Sheriff's Department and Fire and Rescue for the work that they do each and every day protecting the citizens of Stafford County, and also for all of our military here in the United States and throughout the world. Please continue to guide them in all the decisions that they make in protecting us in this world. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd like to now welcome our Commonwealth Attorney, Eric Olson. He's going to give us an introduction to his Youth at Risk Initiative. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm really excited to be here tonight to inform the public and the board of the activities of the Youth at Risk Committee. Back in 2010, the sheriff realized that there was a lot of behavior that was going on in the county, particularly surrounding youth, that were putting them at risk, and that we weren't getting the information that perhaps we could get to get ahead of that behavior. You know, the nature of our job as police and prosecutors are to be reactionary, to actually come in after a crime has been committed, or after behavior has been engaged in. And to a large extent, once that happens, you've already lost, because the behavior has already been engaged in. And the question is, what can you do to prevent the behavior? The first key, the key to prevention is to recognize the behavior, and we have some great assets to do that within the sheriff's office and within the criminal justice system, but really, the question was, how can we partner with members of the community to do better at that? And that was the formation of the Youth at Risk Committee. It incorporates the school, it incorporates members of the community, but significantly, and I think this is unique, it incorporates businesses, the business community of Stafford County to sign on board to the issue of helping out to recognize behaviors that place youth at risk. We've developed a pamphlet, and hopefully, many of you would have, will have gotten the pamphlet to see some of the work that we've already done. It's an informative guide to let parents and students know about some of the dangers that kids are facing. And we've produced that, and we're ready to launch that aspect with this other aspect that I'm here to talk about tonight, and that's our partnering with the business community. We have developed a logo. It's seen on your pamphlet, hard to see here, this is a sticker. We developed this logo, Youth at Risk Committee, it here says, "See, Care, and Call," and the idea is for businesses to sign on as partners with Youth at Risk. We're going to solicit businesses to sign on as partners. We're going to ask them to place this in the window. It'll be their opportunity to declare two things. Number one, that they support the Youth at Risk Committee's business, and that they commit to not engaging in the behaviors that contribute to some of those risky behaviors. They're not going to sell alcohol or tobacco to minors. But as important as that, they're going to be the ears and eyes of the community. So if they see the behavior that perhaps they shook their head and wondered about in the past, they're committing to make that call to the sheriff's office. And if we can recognize some of the behaviors that lead to the more serious crimes before it starts, the idea is that we can get ahead of the game and try to prevent some of the bad things that we see happening. I have with me tonight Neil Mayhew. Many of you know Neil. He is the owner, he's a small business owner in Stafford, Select Leaf Tobacco. He's very supportive in many aspects of this community. He's actually a member of the Youth at Risk Committee, and he has been spearheading the idea of getting businesses to partner with the committee, to make those declarations, to assert themselves as businesses that won't engage in risky behavior, and will actually make the call and be vigilant, be the eyes and ears of the community. So that's what we're doing. We have a cover letter that's going to go out to all the businesses, small businesses in the community. We have the sticker that's going to go with it, and we'll be communicating with those businesses, asking them to partner with us, and hopefully, by doing that, we can stay ahead of some of the juvenile offending behavior and the more serious problems that we see in the community. I will just say, as an aside, I've been prosecuting here for a long time. My first 15 years, we never had one juvenile stick a gun in somebody's face, or use a gun in a crime of violence. It just didn't used to happen in the county. And now, every two or three months, we have some 16 or 17-year-old, or 18-year-old, that's, you know, shooting somebody, or sticking somebody up, or engaging in a, you know, home invasion robbery or something like that. And I think that we're in a situation now where we just have so many people in the county, we have so much, so many people coming from other areas that we're really at risk of having some of our most dangerous juvenile behaviors getting out of hand. And we want to stay on top of that, and this is one of the ways that we're going to do that, and we're committed to doing it. So it's the sheriff's office, the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, the school system, and the business community all partnering together for this effort. And Neil, I don't know if there's anything you want to say, but you've been a part of this, and I appreciate you being here.
Excellent. Ms. Sellers, absolutely.
This is great. Are you familiar with the initiatives that, two groups? Mary Washington Hospital is doing the opioid task force, whatever forum, whatever they were doing. But we've been trying, what's been talked about is getting the schools involved. And I'm sure you probably know that the addiction start in the medicine cabinet.
Yep.
And so there's been a lot of discussion around that. So I'd love to see if we could partner with that. But also, the Community Collaborative. They did a study maybe last year or the year before last, where they actually went into the jail and talked to them about how their criminal behavior started. And Donna Kraus was part of that.
Well, I will say that about four months ago, the Youth at Risk Committee sponsored that forum at the hospital, specifically connected to the opioid crisis. We had the mental health community there, we had the law enforcement community, we had DEA there, all to try to inform the public about the opioid crisis, with the main point being that it starts in the medicine cabinet. A lot of parents are ignorant that the pills in their cabinet are the first step to a lot of addiction issues for kids. Maybe not their kids, but certainly kids that come over to the house and start engaging in those risky behaviors. So we have been doing that, and that's really the whole focus of this committee, to do that.
Hold on, that you want to be part of it?
You could tell, and we want to be part of it.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Olson, thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you so much, appreciate the time.
All right. And this brings us to the presentations by the public portion of our meeting. Next, we'll have the presentations, and anyone that wishes to address the board, this is your opportunity to come before us, to walk down, say your name and address, and watch for the green light to turn yellow, and then you have about a minute left. That's two minutes it turns yellow, and then one minute until it turns red. If you're here to speak on a, on a public hearing item that's on the agenda, then you'd want to wait and save those comments until that time. But you may speak on another topic that's not a public hearing in a moment. I have one speaker card for a Bill Johnson Miles, so I'll let you come up first, please.
Good evening. My name is Bill Johnson Miles. I live at 27 Allegheny Drive in Stafford. First, I want to say thanks for these citizens, the Stafford Citizens Academy. I recently attended that, found it very helpful, found it very, very good. I really enjoyed it. Thank you very much for having that program. Primarily, though, I'm here to speak about transportation. Transportation and traffic congestion is probably the number-one issue in this county. As most of citizens in Stafford, I'm sure they will agree that this is a huge problem here. I recently read that more than $1 billion is needed for roadwork in our Fredericksburg and Stafford area, yet we do have leaders who do not think a regional transportation authority is a good idea, an organization that could be granted the power to raise funds for regional transportation projects. RTAs in Hampton Roads and Northern Virginia together have raised $2 billion in just three years. They did it with retail sales tax, transient occupancy tax, and the gas tax. Virginia's low gas tax rate is 38th in the nation. This is such a huge issue that I'm sure citizens would not mind paying more to fix the traffic problem. But it's not just the roads. We need to keep cars off the roads. We should look at mass transit, maybe extending metro and/or improving VRE. VRE is not near the heavy population area, so why not create express shuttles from the parking rides directly to the VRE stations? I also propose that we make it easier for telework hubs to be created in our county. These are offices where, these are local offices with full office support, where citizens can easily conduct their telework and get away from home to do it. These are just some of my thoughts and ideas, but what is certain is that we need to fix our transportation and traffic congestion problems. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Miles, Mr. Johnson Miles. All right, that was the only speaker card, so anyone else who would like to address the board on any topic other than a public hearing topic may come down and speak now. Hi, Mrs. Clifton. It's good to see you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Irma Clifton, and I live at 100 Carter Street in beautiful downtown historic Falmouth. And as most of you who have been on the board know, for the last couple of years, I have been haranguing you about getting closed captioning for the meetings. And I had requested that it be put in the last budget, and I don't know if it was, and I don't know what happened to it, if it was put in there. However, I was reading the Freelance Star recently, and I saw that Comcast does programs for the public good. And I thought I just might get in touch with them and say, how do you feel about maybe doing a partnership with the county, or doing it just out of the goodness of your heart? Yes. You know, to maybe have closed captioning here. So I'd like to pursue that, but I don't want to step on anyone's toes by doing it. So, you know, if you have any objection to me contacting them, speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, who else would like to address the board on a matter not on public hearing? All right, I will close this public presentation portion, and we will move to our public hearings. I'll ask the county administrator to introduce number 19, Planning and Zoning, or Jeff Harvey. Consider rezoning of 1.15 acres from R1 to B1 in the Falmouth Village Commercial area.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. I'm Jeff Harvey, the Director, Planning and Zoning. May I have the computer, please? The case before us tonight is known as Falmouth Village Commercial. It's a reclassification of property from R1 Suburban Residential to B1 Convenience Commercial. B1 Convenience Commercial is our lower-intensity commercial district, and you'll see in some more detail about the extent and nature which the applicant is proposing to use that zoning category. It would affect four parcels within the George Washington Election District. The total site area for all combined four parcels is a little over an acre. And Charlie Payne, representing LCT and JSC LLCs, is the applicant. This map describes the general location and the zoning of the property and the surrounding area. The subject property is highlighted with the red crosshatch. It's currently zoned R1 Suburban Residential. As you can see from the map, the yellow color is Suburban Residential. We also have some red color in the area, which is indicative of B2 Urban Commercial at the intersection of King Street and Gordon Street. And then also, you have additional commercial areas on the other side of Route 1 and West Cambridge Street. The property at the corner of Carter Street and Gordon Street is Zone B3 Office, while the remaining areas are generally commercial in nature. The big white area that you see on the map itself is VDOT right-of-way. As you may recall, when the VDOT improved the intersection of Route 1, Route 17, and Butler Road, they acquired substantial amount of right-of-way for the future widening of that roadway. This is the existing condition showing an aerial photo of the property. There are currently three residential structures on the property. We have one residential structure at this location. It's known as the Historic Dunbar Kitchen. That structure dates back to 1700s. We have an existing 1955-era Rambler at this location on Carter Street as well, and it has two outbuildings associated with it, one here and one here. We have a 1950 structure that was built as a residence at this location on Gordon Street, and there's an associated three-bay garage building here. And on this parcel, at the far-south end of Gordon Street, it's currently a vacant lot, it previously been used for parking. These are the images of the structures to give you more of a visual effect. You may all recognize Dunbar Kitchen if you've been stopped at the Falmouth intersection, especially heading northbound. You get a really nice view of that historic structure. The 1955 Rambler is shown here on the upper right, as well as the 1950 cinder block building and the garages associated with that cinder block building. This is the generalized development plan for the project. It pretty much shows the existing buildings staying in place with some additional parking. Generally speaking, the parking is proposing a rate of around three spaces per thousand square feet, and that falls into our office and low-intensity commercial retail type of use category. So they can provide adequate parking on-site for generally low-intensity uses. Given the configuration of the property, you'll notice that the parcel on Gordon Street is very narrow, so it has some limitations for redevelopment, as well as the area here off of Carter Street also is relatively small and has some limitations for redevelopment. So under the current condition with the GDP, all the one-story structures would remain. There are proffers that try to speak to limiting the use of the property to low-intensity activities, and I'll get to some of that in a minute. This is a little bit more of a blow-up This is a little bit more of a blow-up of the general development plan, where you can see the parking areas in front of the Dunbar Kitchen, as well as parking areas behind the Rambler and the outbuildings. And then you have parallel parking to be constructed along Gordon Street. There was no traffic impact assessment required with this proposed rezoning. In general, it would generate less than 300 vehicle trips per day. Our threshold for such a study is more than 1,000 vehicle trips per day. The peak hour trip generation is estimated at 13 vehicles per hour. There's no additional road improvements that have been identified or needed at this point in time. And there'd be a single access point on GDP to serve the uses on Carter Street currently or two residential driveways. There are a number of proposed proffers that the applicant has provided, and that went to a lot of discussion with the Planning Commission as far as intensity of use and how to manage that in keeping with the character of Falmouth. They proffered to stay in conformance with the generalized development plan, prohibit a number of commercial uses that are allowed in B1 zone, many of which wouldn't be compatible with the configuration of the property to begin with, but the Commission felt it was important to have that additional assurance that those uses would be not allowed on the property. They'd also provide any sidewalk along Gordon Street would have exposed aggregate material as far as its construction to be compatible with the sidewalk on Washington Street, so trying to keep in with the overall character of the area. They would limit the impervious materials for parking areas. There's been discussion about using seashells or some other similar material that you can see in other areas of Falmouth. Also, there'd be historic marker signs annotating the significance of Dunbar's Kitchen, and it require a historic structures report if they're going to demolish any of the existing buildings on any of those properties. Also, there'd be a requirement for Phase 1 cultural resources analysis for any land disturbance because of the historic nature of this area. And as I mentioned about limiting the intensity of use, if there is any new development or redevelopment to occur, that any buildings would be limited to two stories in height. That fits in with the overall character of the area, plus the recommendations of the Falmouth Redevelopment Area Plan. Any architectural new construction would be compatible with the overall area, and there would be a consideration of rehabilitation prior to demolition if that is possible. Any new construction or additions would go through the ARB Architectural Review Board for its review to comply with the current standards for the Falmouth Historic District. The comprehensive plan recognizes this area within the Falmouth Village Planning Area, which recommends mixed-use residential and commercial-type development. This proposed zoning fits in with that overall recommendation. The board is also currently considering an overlay zone, the Falmouth Redevelopment Overlay Zone, which would affect a total of 81 properties, four of which are this subject application, which would allow some more flexibility in how people use their property, in particular dealing with setbacks and buffering and things of that nature. It would allow the Board of Zoning Appeals to grant special exceptions to allow flexibility for those existing buildings and/or modifications to those buildings, rather than a variance, which is a much harder process to deal with and has to prove a hardship. Also, the overlay zone would, bless you, have some more restrictions as far as uses. Some more uses would be prohibited, which may be allowed in the B1 zone. Additionally, it would require ARB approval of any physical alteration to the exterior of the buildings. It also mentioned that the main structure is historic and culturally significant, so any future development would have to meet those kind of standards in review of the ARB of the exterior architecture. The board had a hearing on the redevelopment overlay on March 21st, but was deferred for a further amendment that is working through the process and is potentially scheduled for later this month. The applicant has included proffers that are compatible with the redevelopment overlay district, limiting uses, the building height, and the ARB review. Overall, with regard to the staff findings, we find as far as positives, it's consistent with the established development pattern of the area, a mix of commercial and residential uses. It encourages future development reuse of properties within the Falmouth District, incentivizes rehabilitation, and is compatible with the village planning area concept and the redevelopment area plan. As far as potential negatives, this use would generate close to 250 vehicle trips per day. Under the existing three residents, they would generate approximately 30 vehicle trips per day. The ARB and the Historic Commission have also looked at this application and provide general support for it, and the Planning Commission's recommended approval seven to zero. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? I have a question. The existing residential use would generate 30 trips a day. What about the potential by right residential use? Is it the same?
Well, Mr. Milde, I was referring to each house generates 10 vehicle trips per day.
Is there room to squeeze any more residential on there, is I guess my question?
Based on the current configuration, not really. There could-
Maybe one on the empty lot.
Yes, maybe one on the empty lot, depending upon certain configuration.
So give you 40 trips a day. Okay, thank you. All right. With no questions, I think it's time for the applicant.
Mr. Chairman and other members of the Board of Supervisors, my name is Charlie Payne, the Law from Herschel Fleischer, and we represent the applicant. Appreciate your time this evening. It's always a pleasure being in Stafford County. I want to thank staff also for its presentation. I think Mr. Harvey has covered all the key bases to this application. This site, as Mr. Harvey stated, just collectively is a very small site. If you take into account all four parcels, it's barely over an acre. I know these parcels fairly well, haven't changed much since I was a child, the condition of them, and the current architectural features. What's important, I think, about this application is something that I know the county has been focusing on in the past, including Economic Development Authority for that matter, is reinvestment in the historic Falmouth Village. In order to attract investment, these new uses and new property owners are essential, I think, to Falmouth's future. That doesn't mean Falmouth has to grow crazy. It doesn't actually have a whole lot of space to do that, and parking is very limited. So the reality is, is the type of uses that are being proposed for any part of redeveloping Falmouth are going to be low intense, which is why you see in our proffer that we have presented to the county, we have proffered out basically all of the intense uses and have retained the uses we think are the highest and best for this particular site, or these particular sites, I should say, given the limitations that I just discussed. The other thing that's important, I think, to note is that other uses, similar uses that are there today, including a law offices there, there's an engineering office that the county just recently sold property to the old accounting house that's going to be off of Gordon Street, right off the River Road. You've also got a professional real estate office literally right across the street from us. Of course, Amis has been a mainstay in the bottom for several years, and many may recall how hard it was for her to get on her feet and sustain her business, small business, in Falmouth. But there's new ownership in Falmouth. There's new property owners who are looking to do new things in Falmouth, but again, in a very consistent manner that's consistent with its historic nature and its low-intensity nature as well. So that's what we have proposed with this application. The other unique thing is, I think, as a pro-economic development guy, especially for Stafford County, is this user is relocating its headquarters, its RE/MAX Professional Real Estate Office, from King George County to here. So we're actually getting a business, a new business, with employees and a professional real estate office that will immediately benefit the area and Stafford County. As Mr. Harvey had also stated, we are proffering conditions that are consistent with the new overlay, that if, or if and when you approve that, will be very compatible with that and will not be inconsistent. It's also important to know that any new construction, because the plan is just to simply adaptively reuse what's there at the Dunbar Kitchen site, any new reconstruction would require, especially where the facade impacts, the ARB approval for certificate of appropriateness. So this isn't like, hey, you approve it, and we come and start building two or three story buildings, which again, we've limited to two, by the way. It's just not going to happen. I also, if you just look at the traffic analysis here, I mean, it's really, really low, intense traffic activity, especially with the new improvements that are happening on Route, that have happened and occurred on Route 1, much of which is a credit to this Board of Supervisors. So having been a Falmouth native, born and raised in the Falmouth Bottom, and seeing all the interesting new investment and new opportunities in that area, I'm very excited about the opportunities, in many ways, not only to attract investment, which again, attracting on new businesses, Stafford, but also to protect and sustain Falmouth's history. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the applicant? You're off the hook for now.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And with that, we will open this up to the public. It's the same rules. The public hearing will begin. The same rules apply, three minutes, look for the yellow light at two minutes, and red light means you're finished. Ms. Clifton, you are the only speaker card on this, so I'll invite you to come first.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Having lived through the beginning of the summer traffic challenge in Falmouth over the last few weeks, I'm here to bring your attention to the gridlock that even a small increase in the number of cars on our road brings to our little village. I'm sorry to have to advise you not to come through Falmouth for the next several months if you are in a hurry to get anywhere. I know the proposal that you have before you tonight is supposed to be load-traffic offices, but there is no guarantee that this will not be a seven-day-a-week traffic, as we don't know what type of offices will be leased, except for, of course, the real estate office, which is a seven-day-a-week operation. Speaking of offices, the structures along Gordon Street are slated for some type of office, but two of those buildings have been, for the last 50 years, used for storage and a garage, hardly in any condition to be converted to offices. It is likely that these structures will be demolished, and I would have been a lot more sympathetic to this proposal if the applicant had been upfront about this in the beginning. I'm still not delighted with the context of Dunbar Kitchen and its streetscape. I don't see a willingness by the applicant to leave the front free of obstruction or the county requiring it to do so. Maybe the historical signage will be enough to remind passersby that a charming little building was once there, and it's back there somewhere still. I'm relieved the restaurant is off the table. Bad pun here, okay? For now, anyway. Although I don't see that specifically in any of the paperwork that I've read over the last couple of days. With the restaurant gone and the most heinous B1 uses permitted proffered out, I reluctantly offer that I do not oppose this project if it is monitored and the future of the project is as it appears in this application. I'm just afraid that as we go along, things will be changed that are not in here, and they say, oh, we couldn't do this, so we'll have to do this another way. So I'm just hoping that this, the county monitors this so that we get what we pay for here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Clifton. Mr. Cheatwood, I think this is for this item, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes, please come up and state your name and address.
Thanks. My name is John Marshall Cheatwood. I live at 86 Culpeper Street in Warrenton, Virginia. I did live in the Dunbar Kitchen for several years, probably five years. I bought it and had the chimneys restored, had the wood shake roofs put on, and I would like to read these notes because I want to just get it all in the record. So as I had said, good evening to you, the Stafford Board members and all other ladies and gentlemen present. My name is John Marshall Cheatwood. I live at 86 Culpeper Street, Warrenton, Virginia, 20186. We are here to discuss the rezoning request for 107 Carter Street in Falmouth. I do not know if the fact that I own the access to the landline between the subject property and Carter Street as built makes any difference, but your photographs show the area. But what I wanted to inform the owners of the subject property in the county, that the subject property does not have legal access to Carter Street. I bought Dunbar Kitchen property, the deed is recorded in Stafford Clerk's office, from two elderly sisters whose family owned the property for over 102 years. One of the sisters came to me one day and said, you do not own to the road. Being surprised, I made inquiries and found that she was, in fact, correct, so I immediately set about resolving the matter. Several months later, the two sisters conveyed the access strip of land in front of the Dunbar Kitchen, known as Stafford County Tax Map Parcel 53D-1-43, and adjoining property, known as Stafford County Tax Map 53D-1-43A, all of which are now owned by Lloyd Taylor. I have never hidden the fact that I own this strip of land between the subject property and the road as built. In fact, I informed Lloyd when the deed was recorded that I owned the strip in front of the Dunbar Kitchen and his house. I have demonstrated my ownership on many occasions. I do own the strip of land and placed nicely carved wooden markers and ran or run caution tape around the property. The mailbox is mine, and I used it until the post office denied the address since there was no one occupying the property. I feel that this matter of access should be resolved before the application is approved, and I am surprised that the applicant took the process so far without securing legal access. I was driving by on Sunday, this past Sunday morning, when I saw the rezoning sign out front, and that was the first notice I had of this proceeding. I photographed the zoning request sign and called the county for the location and time of this meeting. I do enjoy the fact that I own the strip, as it provides me a place to park when I canoe the Rappahannock River. Both the applicant, Mr. Cleveland, and the owner, Mr. Lloyd, know this, and we have discussed this on several occasions. In fact, access is an important part of the application, or if, in fact, access is an important part of the application, I would be happy to discuss a limited use of my strip of land between the subject property and the road called Carter Street as built. And I'd like to submit these written words to someone.
You may hand them to the clerk. Thank you very much.
And that ends my comments.
Perfect timing. All right, that's the end of my speaker cards. Now, anyone here who would like to address the board may. Same rules, to state your name and address. Look out for that red light.
Good evening. I'm John Simpson. I own the little real estate company across the street from the property being rezoned. I have no objection to the rezoning. I have a problem with the traffic problems that this may create. I go to that office generally six or seven days a week. It takes me two light signals, oftentimes two light signals, to cross Butler Road, come back down Butler Road, and head south on Route 1 in order to gain access into my property. An increase in traffic could make that three lights. That's about four minutes per light. The other problem is if I'm coming down Carter Street and want to go north on Route 1 and take a left on Warrenton Road, you take your life in your hands crossing those two lanes of traffic, trying to get to the two lanes that are turning left. The majority of the time, the traffic has backed up past Carter Street, and you pull out and you have no place to go, so you have to stop. I think you have to worry about your citizens who live in Pill Hill and the people who are coming up and around. They all come and talk to me and tell me how bad they think this deal was. It was great for the people who are going through Fredericksburg. It was great for the people who are going up 17, but it's tough on the people who work and live in Falmouth. I think we have a safety issue that's going to come at hand. I'm afraid VDOT is going to make some changes in the rules and regulations, and maybe we won't be able to use it at all, which would hurt us even more. So I do have grave concerns about the traffic problems that this creates, and an additional 250, maybe 500 trips a day. If a real estate office has 10 or 15, maybe 20 agents, there could be far more than any 250 trips a day created by this office. That's my concern. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I have to step out. When it comes time for action, I would hope the board would indulge me with a deferral so I can listen to the rest of the comments and take care of a couple of those issues.
Absolutely. We'll go through the process, but we will not be taking the vote on this this evening. Next speaker, you may come forward, whoever that may be.
Good evening. Elaine Kounders, 622 Lancaster Street in Falmouth. I think we've had some terrific speakers already this evening on this topic. First thing I want to say is the applicant, Mr. Taylor, my understanding is he's the individual who put up a very large, beautiful home on the Rappahannock River at Old Falmouth a number of years ago without going through proper approvals with the county. So when I hear about that little strip of land on Carter Street, it does not surprise me. I think of Old Falmouth Village as George Washington's hometown, and I would like to see it be a planned historic community. Eventually, I'd like to see those little streets like Gordon Street closed off and an area where tourists can walk and view historic buildings. So I'm always concerned when we have proposals like this that are kind of piecemeal. I'm not sure that there is proper space for the kind of businesses that are proposed, particularly there on Gordon Street. There's a lot of square footage proposed. It's a very dangerous corner for, and there's a lot of cut-through traffic there. And obviously, we've heard about the residents who live in that part of the district that have trouble getting around with summer traffic and so forth. So I have several concerns. I think it's terrific RE/MAX wants to come into the county. I would suggest we have several empty storefronts in the Chatham area that they might want to look at. Let's see, what else I have here? Well, there's concern about not having enough sidewalk space, and the traffic is- Well, there's concern about not having enough sidewalk space, and the traffic is a huge concern. So, those are my thoughts on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Counter. Who else would like to address the board on this item? Anyone? All right, I'm going to close, I'm going to leave the public hearing open, and I'll ask the applicant to respond to what he has just heard from the speakers.
Mr. Chairman, other members of the Board of Supervisors, again, my name is Charlie Payne, law firm Herschel Fleischer, and represent the applicant. And again, appreciate your time this evening on this matter, and always appreciate comments from our neighbors and from the community. And we heard much of this during the Planning Commission segment, although we'll tell you the spite strip accusation is fairly new to me, fairly new to us. I will say that pursuant to our records and pursuant to our analysis, it's within the VDOT right-of-way that this gentleman is accusing of having a spite strip. So, we're more than happy to take a look at that after this hearing, and it's interesting that he read a statement and took off. So, be more than happy to talk to him as well when we get an opportunity.
Right here.
Get an opportunity to talk to him before we leave. In regards to, in regards to comments regarding traffic, again, I think we've addressed that. I think the analysis is fairly straightforward as to being the fact that this is a low-intense use. It has very limited traffic impacts. Again, this is an opportunity for some reinvestment in Stafford County, something that's part of the county's comprehensive plan, something that the county has been planning for and encouraging for several years. The Dunbar Kitchen parking, we addressed that in the Planning Commission level when it was raised by Ms. Clifton about having a view from Route 1 going north into the site. We moved the parking and then tucked some of it to the east so that we can improve those views. So, as much as I appreciate Ms. Clifton's comments, as always, when you get past the corner of her house, Dunbar is wide open to see. So, I want to just make that clear, and again, we appreciated your comments at the Planning Commission, because we did move parking because of those comments. We are putting sidewalks on Carter Street, so people can walk around as well. We're using pea gravel, trying to, we're decreasing impervious areas. We've got landscape buffers between our neighbors, and we've heard, we've heard our neighbors, we've heard the concerns, we've addressed each and every one of them. I think having another professional real estate office in this location at that corner is a very good thing. In the future, if VDOT does dedicate or convey, I'm sorry, the property of Stafford County for parking, close the streets up, give us access and parking on that particular area. People can walk into down, into the Falmouth Village area, they can walk around that area. Hopefully redevelopment will occur on that block. Again, this will be a low-intense, positive investment for that community that I think in the long term will sustain the properties in that community. And just another point, we can't demolish anything, we can't rebuild anything without obviously the appropriate permitting and ARB approval. And I know Ms. Clifton is up there on that corner watching absolutely everything that happens in Falmouth. So, I assure you, we're not going to be able to get away with not getting appropriate permits. But with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have, and again, always appreciate comments from the community and happy to address those as well.
Any questions for Mr. Payne?
No, I have a question.
Okay, let's, any questions for Mr. Payne? Mr. Payne, I think you're okay for now.
Thank you.
And you would like to ask the county attorney something, Ms. Sellers?
Yeah, so Mrs. Clifton said something about changing the plan in the future. What would that process look like, just for the public, if they want to come and change the plan into the future?
Supervisor Sellers, you're talking about changing the plan for developing?
Concern was the proffers, and all of a sudden, now you'll have some use they didn't expect.
Sure. If they're, if they want to do anything outside of the proffers, they would have to come before the Planning Commission first for a public hearing with notification to the adjoining property owners, and then that will come to the board for a similar public hearing with notification to the adjoining property owners.
So, we would know about it. They couldn't just all?
We'd have to prove it.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
That's correct.
All right. I will close the public hearing now, and I'll bring it back to the board for a deferral motion.
I have a question.
Oh, a question from Ms. Harvey. You do have questions. Mr. Harvey.
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to see the plat again. I'm curious about where this land is.
Ms. Mauer, I've not seen exactly where this description of the property is. I've had a discussion with Mr. Cheatwood probably two years ago, and he mentioned there was a strip. On our county tax maps, it shows that there's, the parcels go to the right-of-way of Carter Street, as well as the plat and the GDP provided by the applicant. So, there may be a title issue. I'm not aware of it, but with regard to our advertising a public hearing, we advertise tax map parcels.
Okay. But it might be this little tiny strip in the front? Is that what we're talking about?
A long Carter Street.
That's what it was described, yes.
Okay. All right. I'm certain that, since this is deferred, you guys will settle through that.
Any more questions for anyone? I have a motion for deferral.
Second.
And it's seconded, and before we vote it, I will say that I'm, I'm happy to see that people are, Mr. Cleveland and Mr. Taylor are taking an interest in Falmouth. We have been trying to move things along there for quite some time. The board has put a lot of energy into trying to attract this type of interest. So, that said, if anyone else has any, doesn't have any comments, we'll call the question. Please cast your votes. And you may tally those. And we voted for deferral, six with one absent. Thank you. Mrs. Baumke would like to make a comment.
I would just like to let the public know that Mr. Thomas had to leave here at 7:30 for another event. I think it's the first time since I've been on the board with him in three and a half years that he's had to exit a meeting. So, he apologized in advance, but he did let us all know that he had to leave. So, if you have any questions, I'm sure he'd be more than happy to get in contact with you.
Thank you, Ms. Baumke. All right, number 20, it looks like Commissioner of the Revenue, consider a tax deferral program for property owners adjacent to Lake Moonee and other improvements.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Scott Mioski, Commissioner of Revenue. And I'm here proposing for your consideration ordinance 017-24, which implements a tax deferral program for property owners adjacent to Lake Moonee and other county improvements, commonly referred to, I believe, as the Lake Moonee Bill. Just a brief history, Lake Moonee was dedicated in 2015, but it wasn't until January 1st, 2016, that the residents around the lake saw their property values affected by the influence of the lake. Caused some properties to increase by 100%. Property values went up dramatically based upon the completion of the lake. That prompted the board to add to your legislative agenda program a tax deferral or relief program to help give those folks some relief. A bill was passed in the House and a companion bill in the Senate, signed by the governor on March 13th. The bill will be effective July 1st, 2017. It is local option, though, so you all will have to take action today if you want to offer the deferral program. I believe when we initially started discussing this, we were talking about a tax relief program which would forgive either all or a portion of the increase in taxes. That bill was introduced by Delegate Cole. It died quickly in the General Assembly because it required a constitutional amendment. That's where the idea for tax deferral came in. There was an existing bill that offered a deferral program. They were able to add us to that bill, and that with still a lot of effort on my part and many of your parts, we were able to get that through. It was a fairly controversial bill, is limited only to Stafford County, and limited to only property owners who saw an increase in property values due to the completion of a county project in the year 2015. That would only apply to Lake Moonee. To qualify for the program, 2016 becomes the base year. If your tax assessment increased by more than 25% between 2015 and 2016, and it was due to the influence of the lake, then you qualify. If your property, if your tax assessment increased because you completed a finished basement or a deck, we had to exclude that from the calculation. So, if you increased by more than 25% in that timeframe, you're eligible for the program. It must be your primary residence. If you are eligible for the program, you can defer up to 95% of the tax increase, and you can do that for 2016, so it claws back, it's retroactive, and you can do it for any year going forward. And the idea behind that is, we want to return these people to the same position that everybody else is in. So, allowing them to defer 95% of the taxes, then they could see a maximum of a 5% tax increase every year, which is about normal when you consider the reassessments. Those taxes will be deferred, and they will be due when the property either sells, and then the new owner is not eligible for the program, because they know what they're getting into. They know they're buying waterfront property or the death of the owner. Give you an example, if your bill in 2015 was $2,000, and 2016, it went to $3,000, then that's more than 25%. You would be eligible for the program, so you could defer, of the $1,000 increase, you could defer $950 of that. This just takes that same example out a couple of years, so that you can see on the bottom row, it is a much more manageable tax increase. That's your 5% increase compared to what is occurring on the top row, which is the tax bill. The difference between the top row and the bottom row, that is your deferral. The state law allows for repayment of that tax to be set at, with a 5% interest rate. However, the ordinance was drafted at a 0% interest rate, because we, the idea is not to generate money, it's to, to help the folks who genuinely can't pay that tax bill. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for the Commissioner? Ms. Mauer.
Approximately, how many homeowners are we talking about?
There's approximately 60.
60?
Yes.
Any other questions? Ms. Baumke?
Yeah, of those 60 property owners, is there, did they all have roughly about the same percentage increase?
No, they didn't.
Or did it really vary?
It varied. The, the, the bulk of the increase came in the land. So, if you had a lower-valued house, then, I believe we increased the land by $100,000 due to the impact of the lake. So, if you had a lower-valued house, then that's going to be a greater percentage increase than somebody that had a million-dollar house.
Okay.
So, they, the land values all increased proportionately, but the total assessment did not. It varied.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Well, with that, I believe we will open this up.
Just have one more question.
We do have one more question.
And maybe I missed this in the presentation, they would have to apply?
Yes. The law is written that I have to figure out who qualifies.
Okay.
And after July 1st, if you all approve it, then I will contact them. I'll send them letters and let them know how to apply.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, it's time to open this up to the public, in the public hearing section. So, you know the rules, come on down, state your name and your address. You can put it down all the way if you like, however you want.
Good evening, and nice to see everybody here. Okay, my name is Jody Lockmiller. I live at Lake Moonee, and my home has been there for almost 40 years, like a lot of the other homes. And I'm a senior, and I also have low income, so I want to thank Gary Snellings, Joe Brito, and Delegate Mark Cole, being very helpful in putting together this humanitarian package for a lot of those homeowners and families that tried to pay our taxes, were good Stafford, you know, citizens for many decades. We did not ask for the county to put, you know, their big municipal project in our backyards, and we gave our land up, you know, like we good citizens would, okay, to help this county, you know, prosper. But we did not know that we were going to end up having our property value double. And, you know, just like Scott was saying, you know, we have, you know, homes that don't have a lot of value. However, the property went, you know, 100% up all of a sudden, and so that increased our tax $1,000 a year, which was not very fair. So, that's why we were, you know, thankful that they were doing that for us. Now, of course, the General Assembly did not like the idea of, you know, losing out on taxes, but there are other states in the, you know, union here in the United States that do offer, you know, a grandfather clause for property owners who happen to have, you know, a project that comes along that makes the value go up while they were there first. You know, it's just, it's just not a fair thing. So, we were asking that, you know, you would pass this and allow the interest rate to be as low as you can make it, and help us out, because we do pay our taxes, and we don't want to have to struggle to make future payments, okay? Because we are getting older, and a lot of us are settled in our years, in our homes, you know, for the rest of our days, and we don't want to have to struggle. Okay? So, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I should have stayed in civics a little bit longer and learned local politics, because I'd love to see how this.
Name and address, please.
Sam Tittle, 82 Grove Ling. Okay, we're going to start by reading to you this background report. Lake Moonee Reservoir was constructed to meet the increasing needs of Stafford County's water demand. As a result of the creation of Lake Moonee, surrounding parcels became lakefront property, and the property values of those parcels dramatically increased by as much as 10% to 260%. And I happen to be one of those. I also am retired. That property I live on is older than me, 43 years that house resides. It's one of the Civil War properties where the soldiers laid down at that ridge. But let me tell you why I'm here. All politics is local. All government is local. We need your help. We really need your help this time. I was here speaking with you a little while back, as you'll remember, Ms. Mauer. Ms. Baumke, I just love the way that you're so attentive, and I thank Mr. Snellings and Mr. Maruski. These are some strict, strong leaders. But when your property goes up $100,000, and you are not employed, and you are on a fixed income, and you're breathing every breath you've got, and you're reading that this is constructed to meet the increasing needs of Stafford County's water demand, that means that everybody in Stafford County is going to be using that water, and you're, and Stafford County is selling that water, all right? So, you're getting a return on the investment. And unless we could get a quid pro quo for us residents, us property owners, that had those taxes increased so dramatically, I'd suggest that maybe you consider sending us a bonus check every year, so we can pay those taxes. Okay? I am serious, that we've got to get something done. So, with that said, I know what you're going to be voting on, because you're going back into a, an assembly that's got to do something for the tenants here. But I'm asking you this time to take a look at this, and since it's local, see if there's anything else that you can do to protect and defend us, because whatever they call it, Lake Moonee, it's still a reservoir. And so, now I live on a reservoir, okay, that I'm having to pay for. So, with all that said, I thank you for your time. I ask that you go back, you sit down, and you consider this, because I still am a voter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Brito, former board member, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. My name is Joe Brito, 544 West Rocky Run Road. I'm speaking tonight for a number of my neighbors. Imagine owning your house for 25 years or more, planning for retirement, and planning to live there the rest of your life. Then, all of a sudden, you get a bill in the mail that says, "You owe us. You are hereby ordered to pay $100 a month the rest of your life." But that is what happened to the homeowners that live around Lake Moonee. Last year, some of us were hit with real estate tax increases as high as $1,400 per year. We requested tax relief, but what is proposed is a tax deferral program. It's not exactly what we wanted, but at least it's a mechanism that can allow us not to be taxed off of our land. I want to thank the board for considering the impacts of the reservoir has had on our finances. I ask that you please support this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to address the board on this issue? All right, Mr. Maruski? Thank you. Who else would like to address the board on this issue? All right, Mr. Maruski, would you like to respond?
Slide your left.
No, there's, there's nothing more I'd like to add, unless you all have some follow-up questions after the, after the public comments.
All right, then with that, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to Mr. Snellings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I make a motion, I'd just like to say, I want to thank Delegate Dudenhaffer and Senator Stewart and Delegate Cole. The three of them really championed this bill through the General Assembly. Virginia is so much different than other states when it comes to tax laws. We just don't have the, any change to taxes requires a constitutional amendment. It's a very difficult process. It's a process that's almost impossible to get done because of what you have to go through to get there. We did have a meeting with the citizens over there, Mr. Mioski and myself. We did promise them that as soon as the November elections are over, we will get meetings with the delegation, whoever that may be. We know of at least one change, and Speaker Howell will not be back. So we will get meetings with the delegation so that they can chat with them about what the next step is and what we can do to maybe push us a little bit further. But with that said, I'd like to make a motion for O-17-24.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'd like to say something.
Ms. Mauer?
Yeah. This is where coming to the board meetings actually helps, because when, when you guys came to the board meeting, you know, it opened up the entire board's eyes. I know you've been working with, with your supervisor, that, that something needed to be done. And I praise Mr. Snellings for taking the lead on this. And I also thank Mr. Mioski. He spent quite a bit of time in Richmond, answering questions on the phone, making sure people understood the, the severity of what was going on here in Stafford County. So you've been served well by your supervisor, and you've been served well by your Commissioner of Revenue. And I want to thank everybody for their patience, because sometimes legislative changes take a little while. But, but this took only a year, which is not bad. So, so I'm happy to support this, and, and I want to thank you for your participation.
Mr. Snellings?
Let me just echo what Ms. Mauer said. Thank Mr. Mioski. He was a, really did a lot of work on this, put in a lot of time. So I really want to thank him. And thank the rest of the board for their support. I really appreciate it.
Mrs. Sowers?
Just to let you guys know, it's probably a long battle, like Ms. Mauer said. This is probably just the beginning. If you're looking for a constitutional amendment, just prepare yourself for a long, hard fight in Richmond. But we'll keep going at it.
Anyone else?
We don't have any place to go.
Excuse me?
Taxes go up.
All right. With that, I'm going to ask you to call, I'm going to call the question. Please cast your votes. And you may tally when ready. And that passes six with one absent. And our last item on the agenda is Public Works, Consider Amending and Reordaining County Code, Section 15.41, Maximum Speed in Residence District. Chris, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Christopher Rapp, Director of Public Works. Tonight, we have a public hearing on creating a residence district. Staff received a request from residents within the Estates of Hartwood subdivision concerned with the, the, the high level of traffic traveling along Estates Drive in excess of the speed limit, posted speed limit of 25 miles per hour. The Estates Drive is a residential road. There's 13 homes with direct frontage. It connects to Hartwood Road. Staff conducted a traffic study over a period of 11 days last October. The required criteria to establish a residence district was met or exceeded on five separate days out of the 11. The next step in that process to create the district would be the petition by the residents. So we spoke with several of the residents, and they collected signatures on a petition. In support of the establishing a district, they received 73, 73 percent signatures. The criteria, as I mentioned, was met for establishing the district. It was a residential local road. It had a posted speed limit of 25 miles per hour. It exceeded the average speed requirements, an 85th percentile, and we received the, over 50 percent of the signatures of the residents along the road. There was a requirement for, a volume requirement of 600 vehicles, but when we contacted VDOT, they actually told us they don't have that requirement. And so that really wasn't a concern. It's a VDOT road. They were fine with, they had no objection to establishing the district and putting up signs for excessive speeding. This is a location map of the Estates Drive. And, and again, if a residence district is created, this would allow for additional signs to be put up below the posted speed limit. That would say additional $200 fine. So basically, the residence district would be crea, would be created with the proposed ordinance, and then it would allow the Sheriff's Department to, to enforce that additional fine, and also alert those driving along the road of that fine. And I'd be happy to take any questions at this time.
Ms. Sowers, please.
I have to ask this question. So we have 13 homes along this road. 11 of them signed this petition. So is it wrong to assume that the, that these 11 homeowners are trying to find these two houses with these speeding cars?
There, there is some additional homes that are, that are located, that, that access the road, farther down the road.
Oh, that Bronco Road? So they don't have to get the signatures?
They just need the signatures along the, the frontage of the road.
Okay. That makes a little bit more sense than just two homes that were the problem children. But okay.
How are you doing? Could, you have more?
That's it.
Okay, that's it. Any questions? And I take it, you know, I haven't seen a lot of these. For some reason, I don't remember seeing a resident street application. But I, I'll go ahead and open, open the public hearing. For anyone that would like to speak on this, to this issue, the rules are the same, three minutes. Would anyone like to address the board? I will close it and bring it back to Mr. Snellings, as it is in the Hartwood District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to lay Ms. Sowers' fears, this is an issue because we've got other streets using this road, and they've had a pretty rough time up there. They really have. I went up and watched. I mean, it's amazing how fast people speed through these old neighborhoods. But with that said, I'll motion for O-17-25.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Oh, Ms. Baumke, yes, please.
I've put a couple of these in the Falmouth District, and I, I, as we talked about pole-mounted signs today at infrastructure meeting, I don't really think that these signs have an impact on the neighborhoods, but I am a believer in them, because if my residents want them, then I'm going to put the signs up. But I think that the Sheriff's Department needs to hand out a few tickets for a message to be sent to these people that are speeding. Thank you.
Ms. Sowers?
Mr. Rapp, I want some of, I want to know how we can get some of these signs. I got some neighborhoods that could use these signs.
Ms. Sowers, there's a, a process, and we'd be glad to meet with you or, or share that process with you.
Thank you. Good. Anyone else have any comments or questions about the, the motion that's before us? All right, please cast your vote. And tally the votes. And it passes six with one absent, and I believe that is the end of our meeting. Meeting adjourned.